I have a short statement leading into our moment of silence that I'd like to read into the record. Seventy-five years ago today, 160,000 of our bravest and most courageous young troops, comprising the largest portion of the allied forces, stormed the five beaches at Normandy on the coast of France to further the liberation of Europe from the Axis powers. The five beaches were dubbed by General Omar Bradley as Utah, Omaha, Gold, Juneau, and Sword. This was the largest amphibious military action in world history. D-Day, also known as Operation Overlord, was the pivotal event of World War II, and within 11 months, Germany surrendered, and 14 months later, the Japanese were defeated, and the fascist and imperialistic attempts to take over our planet were quashed. The phrase "D-Day" stands for Departed Date in military lingo. This invasion involved 7,000 nautical vessels and 10,000 aircraft. The Normandy campaign carried on through August and resulted in 200,000 allied forces casualties. The veterans of our armed forces of that time have come to be known as the greatest generation, and this evening, we pause to remember their courage to change the history of our world. May we today be forever vigilant and mindful of the threats posed to us around the world, and may our current and future generations come to know and appreciate what happened on June 6, 1944. It is our job to teach, to remind, and to instill knowledge of such things as war, the Holocaust, and oppression. It is our duty as good stewards of our democratic republic and for people comprising democracies throughout our world to educate all citizens, but particularly our youth, that freedom is never free, and that liberty is a fragile gift realized from the bloodshed of others who oftentimes paid the supreme sacrifice while fighting for us and our values. This evening, we honor and remember the gallant service of all of those who have fought and the many of whom died on June 6, 1944, and thereafter, to preserve our great American way of life. Tonight, we honor our heroes and all veterans. Let us never forget their rich legacies. And I would ask our resident veteran, Mary Alba, to introduce her allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we've got several items of important business, but I don't know if there's anything more important. I'm going to defer to Councilman Rylands for a few seconds to tell us, share his big news. Do you want to tell us about your big news?
Well, I became a grandfather this afternoon. My first grandchild, Aleta Rose Rylands.
What is it?
Aleta, A-L-E-T-T-A.
He's looking at the press like this kid's gonna finish his first headline.
But my wife waited up there all day, and I left at 4:25, drove up, and they were in the lobby and got to go up and see her together, and then come back to here. So it's...
Congratulations.
First one down, I got another one coming in July.
I told him it's life lowering. He said, "Yeah, I already know, I'm the third banana now." I said, "No, no, it's the greatest thing ever to happen. Jeez, it's not all about CJ."
Right. Thank you.
The other big news of the day is, and I know sometimes it seems like we're playing sneaky peek tricks on the public in the hall, but oftentimes, well, sometimes, I wouldn't even say oftentimes, there are matters involving personnel, things, and property-related things that it's important to not compromise our positions on things, and we do have special meetings that sometimes involve executive sessions. We've had two or three of those executive sessions in the last almost five weeks now since Colin Rigger announced his resignation as our city recorder, to try to, as in a timely a way as possible, get back to seven council members. We are a better legislative body when we have seven voices versus six voices. So it was important that we go through this process in a timely but thorough way. I would tell you that we had two excellent applicants who applied for this job, and I think both applicants knocked our socks off, as we probably expected they would going into the interviews. But as the council weighed the two choices, one candidate emerged as the new city recorder. At this time, I would entertain a motion that we designate our new city recorder.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Skinner, and I think a second by Mrs. Alba. Mr. Skinner, would you like to identify our choice?
Sure. The council is proud to announce that Randy Sanders, graduate of Buchanan, Upsher High School, 1976 class, native of this community, will be joining us up here on the bench, and the mayor will now swear him in.
Mr. Sanders, would you please come forward? When we met back in 1983, I didn't have reading glasses.
I have Rigger glasses, they're not black, trifle.
I also had a full head of brown hair.
Let's not talk about hair.
All right, this is the official oath of the City of Buchanan, County of Upsher, State of West Virginia. If you would repeat after me. I, Randall A. Sanders...
I, Randall A. Sanders...
...do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm.
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
...the Constitution of the State of West Virginia...
The Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
...the Charter and ordinances of the City of Buchanan, West Virginia...
The Charter and ordinances of the City of Buchanan, West Virginia.
...and faithfully discharge my duties...
And faithfully discharge my duties.
...as recorder of said city...
Of said city.
...to the best of my abilities...
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And sign it as Randall A. Sanders, please. We will not only file that in our oath book, but deliver a copy, a certified copy, to the county clerk as required by state statute. Okay. And if you'd like to come over, you get the broken down chair.
I get the broken, of course. Yeah, that's unfair. Thank you.
No, you don't want this one. Hey, take this chair right here.
Oh, yeah, that's giving away the good ones. Mary's giving up all the goodies right off the box.
You'll be fine, thank you.
This is gonna be a short meeting.
Congratulations.
We don't have to need it.
My knees go up.
Thank you, sir.
I can't believe y'all gonna make him sit in that chair.
And just like that, we have seven again, except Pam Buckloo, Capery, whatever she's calling herself. She got confused during the interview the other day.
Well, it's like there are names.
She's not here, so it's all the fun. She introduced herself to Randy as Pam Capery, so I've been chastised for months to not call her that anymore, and she turned her around and did it to herself.
Robbie, I think she should do the census.
Entertain a motion, and that's... Yeah, don't dare, it never comes from meetings.
I'd be surprised if the going's on of such...
I can see that.
So we have a couple of guests. First up, our scheduled guest, who has terrific news to report. Matt Turner with Opportunity House. Matt, we'd love to hear the good news from you.
Good news? Well, the Opportunity House good news is that, actually, before I get into that, I want to thank you guys for creating the position and hiring Callie. We just got a, we were awarded by Persa, a $200,000 grant, Rural Communities Opioid Response Planning Grant, and she was a huge part of that. She basically alerted me to the existence of the possibility, helped a lot, given, because by the time we found out, we had to respond pretty quickly to get this grant completed. And I have never worked on a grant where we had this much cooperation from as many different organizations as we did. The City of Buchanan involved through Callie. Kristy Wilson with Community Care West Virginia was a huge help and continues to be a help to me as we start to implement this grant. Teresa Poling from Buchanan Medical Center and West Virginia Wesleyan College was involved, and Skip from St. Joe. And everybody came together so that we can continue to work together to look at what we can do in our community to improve our response to the current addiction crisis. The areas that we're gonna focus on, Community Care just recently completed one of these grants, and they were focused primarily on the prevention and treatment aspects, the medical aspects, and have done amazing things in several different counties. I believe they're moving into Upsher County this year with the PAX Good Behavior Game, which is a evidence-based practice to help prevent substance abuse by working with all kids. It doesn't isolate different kids in a classroom, it's just a practice that they use in an entire classroom to help overcome some of the problems that kids who live in high-stress environments have to deal with, there are kids that have absentee parents and are not parented well, so this kind of teaches them how to be good little kids and learn, and hopefully not get into substance abuse situation later on.
This is a planning grant. Do you want to explain how that works?
Sure, as well as I can. What we're gonna be doing is we're gonna be researching, the areas that we're gonna be looking at are what we can do in this community as far as intervention goes and long-term recovery, and evaluate what our needs are. And then hopefully, generally, these planning grants will lead to unlocking the door to other funds to allow us to implement what we determine our needs to be. We'll be hiring three full-time people to work on this grant, program manager, program coordinator, and a researcher system.
And it's $200,000?
Yes.
For the first year?
$200,000 for the first year, and then once we turn in our results, and we determine, you know, and we tell SAMSHA, you know, this is what this community needs to address these areas, then generally, there's more money made available. I think Community Care unlocked about $2 million with their grant, and we're hoping to have similar results. You know, obviously, because what I do, my focus is probably gonna be primarily on expanding long-term recovery programs in this community. I'm also on the board of directors for the West Virginia chapter of the National Alliance of Recovery Residences, so we're trying to, you know, looking at those guidelines and how we can implement that to get, basically, the maximum number of beds with their kind of guidelines, which are more residential-type facilities, not institutional. So we'll probably be looking at some more scattered housing, so we don't stigmatize people by having that house or that building. They'll just be in the community like the three houses that we have now are. And personally, I want to look at what we can do to treat families in place. There are probably thousands of grandparents in Upsher County now that are parenting children in complete contradiction to their life plans. You know, this is not what they had planned for this point in their life, but because the parents are unavailable, they're forced into being parents again. We did have some experience several years ago at Opportunity House where we had programs where we could treat entire families in place. It was something that kind of accidentally happened, it wasn't the intent of that grant. But over a few-year period, over three years, we pulled 15 kids out of foster care, returned them to healthy families, and then treated the entire family in place. So we're now typically, because CPS has stretched so far, when they return kids to a family, they withdraw services at the same time, when they're actually motion needed. And our intent is, again, can we wrap this whole family with services in place, treat the whole family, which we did, again, for three years. Pulled 15 kids out of foster care, to this day, all those kids are still with their families, except for the ones who have aged out of the system. And we were able to do it for less money than CPS spends to keep one kid in out-of-state foster care. West Virginia has about 8,000 kids in foster care right now, and close to 800 have replaced out-of-state because West Virginia doesn't have enough willing and able families to take care of those kids. So we're hoping to be able to put a dent in that locally, and improve the quality of life for people here, you know, by not making them go all the way down that rabbit hole, hopefully being able to intervene early before, you know, the child has to be traumatized by pulling them out of a home and putting them somewhere else, and treating the whole family. But again, you know, this is a research grant, so we gotta, you know, make sure that that's actually something that's viable and all that. We can't really just predict what our research is gonna show. You know, we need to do the work, but I think that's the, those are the areas of focus that we're really gonna look at, is how do we treat families and how to intervene early.
I think it's so worthy of reiteration that you talk about how this collaboratively occurred. And of course, we always appreciate what Callie does for us internally and externally, but the fact that Rick Simon's in Community Care and Skip Joelberg with St. Joseph's, you had endorsements from the county health department, Wesleyan College, and the school system, and when we all pull together, great things happen.
Yes, you're exactly right, because, you know, we're all working in our separate silos, very little's gonna happen, just beating a lot of dead horses or duplicating services unnecessarily. So I think this will give us a maximum chance to make some positive impact in some local community projects.
We appreciate Opportunity House being the front entity to take on the onus, the burden of making this all come together, and we trust that we'll have updates in the weeks and months to come.
We will keep you apprised.
Any questions for Matt?
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Matt, appreciate you. Our next guest is Dennis Cordis. Dennis warned me that he's coming bringing gifts.
Yeah, you haven't got an idea what it is yet. What do you see? Let's see what happens here.
CJ read the astute observation that it looks like a picture.
Well, it could be, it could be. Not an aircraft carrier, I don't know that much. Actually, if you'll come around here, I'll present you with this picture.
Sure, you're welcome. We're first.
I first became aware of this Colonel John Buchanan at the time and because of the bicentennial grant you started. So here's a little bio on Colonel Buchanan and how I'm related through that. I'm into Buchanan, the clan, out of Detroit, so I'm entirely aware of the... If you'd like to open this...
We'll make this a part of our record this evening, how's that?
Okay. The good thing, I used felt tip for printing it.
How about that? Dennis wearing a dress.
That's a kiln.
Come on over here.
You couldn't, we should, couldn't.
I'll shake your hand with this hand.
Look right here.
Ambi is now has the challenge of figuring out which wall this will adorn.
You do have a dark one, right?
That's Kirby, Dennis. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Enjoy.
We'll find a, we'll find a good place to feature. I'm gonna give it to him.
Thanks. He's a thinker of all things. Hey, you guys, enjoy, full of stuff.
Well, has some stuff in there.
Steals it from the girls out front and puts it in his drawer.
That one was not 98 cents.
All right, we're down to, is there anybody else who wanted to address the council that snuck in on me without wanting to be recognized? We're gonna move into our department's board reports, and first up is, boy, double kudos to Callie. Yeah, Callie? Yeah, there she is, over there.
In your packet, you have the report that I generally put together, so starting out with press releases and that type of information, and our Facebook and website activity in the past few weeks, and just looking at a few, especially from Facebook that had the most views and shares and that sort of thing, and several of them were more of the practical type information, street closures there on Randolph Street, or changes in traffic flow, those got, oh, close to 8,000 shares there on the traffic flow changes, and the street closures were, you know, over 1,000 each, and reminders about waste collection being a delay, so we're getting information out that's important about just different practical things that happen with the city. And then also, the beautiful Memorial Day program that happened out at Heaven or Cemetery that got quite a lot of news and looks there as well. Probably won't go down through every single one, just seeing if there's any other major highlights that we should touch on, but we did have, as you can see, the page is kind of filled up there with our Facebook posts. The website activity and traffic was about, you know, normal, what we see, you see those spikes, those generally correspond with one of the Facebook posting that linked back to our, to our website, and so we had some, of course, all the bear news too, so that was in there. Then grants-wise, we did finally receive the money from the Families Leading Change, the way I reported way back in January that we would be receiving $1,000 for the Stockard Youth and Community Center Nature and Garden Programming. We did finally also receive the money for that, so that was good. We did get the 21st Century Community and Learning Center grant application submitted in conjunction with the Upsher County Education Administration. We'd really like to thank Sarah Stankas and Deb Harrison for their assistance on that, as well as Deb Brooksworth. And then Jay and I and Jerry are all working on the DOH Transportation Alternatives Program that was submitted. Now I've been working with the police department a little bit on the Walmart Foundation and some funding for National Night Out in August, and of course, we'll still be resubmitting for the Abandoned Mines Land Pilot, funding for the Riverwalk Extension and the Stockard Youth and Community Center Expansion as well, so that's coming up. And then as far as events that are coming up this weekend, at Wesleyan, South West Virginia Try This Conference. On Monday, Jerry Arnold has put together an ADA Awareness Exercise that will be participating in downtown. And then on June 15th, there will be a planting of a peace rose at the Riverwalk Park, a group had approached us about asking to do that, and so we are facilitating as best we can and happy to, happy to help with that. And then just Father's Day, Juneteenth, West Virginia Day, and of course, the Fourth of July, and there's celebrations coming up as well. At the bottom, you see, the image at the bottom is what's out on the LED sign, and it's advertising the music and celebration, of course, with Festival Fridays at Draboun, and then fireworks up on Main Street, and the best viewing area really being over at West Main Street for the fireworks after Festival Fridays.
So that's all you've been doing, huh, Callie? Any questions for Callie? The grant through the Board of Education and Stockard could yield us the value of $1 million in programmatic and staffing assistance and all kinds of things, and there's a spillover impact upon theater once we're up and running with that as well, so it's, the potential is just huge. Thank you, Callie. I don't want to ask you any questions. Next up is Deborah Brockleman with the Stockard Youth and Community Center. Train's arriving on perfect timing.
Yes. Shall we?
Well, Camp Buccaneer began this week, where we have kids on waiting lists, so that's
good and also good, but we're really busy. Had a licensing review on the 23rd, everything went very well. We're requesting to have our numbers increased to alleviate the waiting list, but we have a few loops to jump through for that. We've also had our Camp Buccaneer trainings for all of our staff, and CPR training, birth aid, and the Child Abuse Recognition and Our Orientation, was three days of trainings that they had to go through, went very well. We participated in Rachel's Challenge also, the last week of school, and most of our staff were there, and they did face painting for the kids. And today, we had a visit from Arnett, Caviss, and Tuchman employees for an Impact Day of Community Service. They did reading lab with the kids, they pulled weeds and groomed the playground, and played some games with the kids, and that was their Day of Impact, and they chose us to do their service at Stockard Youth Center. Also, we have a summer, a kids' summer art camp happening starting next week, and there's a flyer on the back of your, of my report that has all the details. We're hoping to have a good turnout with that. Also, we've been doing some interviews to replace the recently vacated position that April Small had as the volunteer coordinator and after-school physician. We've had a few really good candidates, and we're hoping to make a decision really soon. Hopefully, maybe by next week. Also, we're planning to participate in the Fourth of July Celebration in conjunction with Festival Fridays. We have some staff available, we're gonna do something there for Stockard. Also, next Saturday will be the first Ucare pool party for the high school students. The admission for the court is $2. We'll have pizza and drinks provided and prizes. There's volunteer opportunities available for chaperones, and we'd like to do that. And that's all I have.
Questions for Deborah?
It's an happening place across the street. Lots of ideas.
Thanks, Deborah. Thanks, Deborah. Next up is Public Works Director Jerry Arnold.
Under Director, attended degree in infrastructure and training last month in Philadelphia, intend to work on our ADA Transition Plan, and would encourage council and anyone in the public to attend the ADA Exercise in Southern, off the model, my shoes, Monday at 10 o'clock. We'll have you, we'll have you out of there by noon, but again, it's a worthwhile exercise. Water Department's working on tank panel in Victoria Village, replacing an airline raw water intake. Sewer Department is working at Westview Acres, Crew Two, Solomore Street. The maintenance crews assisting Crew Two and plant crews, routine plant activities. Waste Department, we're still working on a trailer. Street Department, the big news of the Street Department is we've got a couple of long-term senior employees who we're gonna be losing due to retirement at the end of the month, and that's gonna be a huge hole to try to fill in our department, so it's especially this busy time here. We'll get through it as usual, but that's coming up, and that's Charlie Rippon, Melvin Smith, and that's just huge. Crew will be paving Trader's Alley next week, weather permitting, and they helped with the sound system installation, jawbone, and some LED lights down at the Bocce Ball Court over the last couple of weeks. Under Engineering, the early warning monitor systems, they're ordering equipment now. The water system improvements, expect the project completion by June 30. The water system improvements, expected project completion by June 30th. The storage tank inspections are out the bid, as also with the demolition of the St. Joseph's Tank. The Walt Trail Extension Number Four application's been submitted, and the River Greenway application. The North Buchanan Park Grant, project completion by August 31st, and construction's expected in the next couple of weeks with the West Virginia DOH Water Line replacement project I will brush you for. And that's all I have there, listen to me.
We certainly encourage everyone to participate in the ADA Awareness Exercise next Monday on the Community and Training Room, and that's, as I understand it, you'll spend about a half hour there, and then it's going to be out in the field, weather permitting, right?
Yes.
Field exercises.
Break your umbrellas.
Yeah.
We'll leave them out in the field with some props and simulate construction closures of sidewalks, things of that nature, and just traversing the sidewalks in both wheelchairs and different degrees of vision impairments, goggles. So, and I have, Dave Thomas is going to be there to speak. I have some community members that are coming to speak about what they face on a daily basis in trying to traverse some of the sidewalks and just generally what they face in life, you know, with the disabilities that they have.
Sounds like a terrific exercise. Questions for Jerry? Thanks a lot, buddy. To all the guys.
Thanks, Jerry.
Next up is Ambi Jenkins, the keeper of the purse strings. Are we going to stay afloat for another one, Ambi?
I believe so. So I'm going to give you balances at the end of May. For general fund checking, 816,435, I'll just pause button there. This is at the end of May, and when we get to the end of June, that's our fiscal year ends. For the fiscal year 2019-20, starting July, we estimated our cash balance on hand at 650,000. Now, there's a lot of things being expensed this month because it's construction season and they're ending their budgets, so they're seeing that they have some capital expenses that they can get some items with. But just to note, we have 816,000 right now, so we estimated 650,000. Anything we come over into the new year with more than 650,000, we need to budget that out in budget revision. It probably won't beat the 150,000, but we are definitely, I think, going to meet the 650,000. Cold tax was 44,842, general fund CD, 83,704, municipal stabilization, 512,148, and the Stockard Youth Centers capital campaign is 274,505 with the pledges included. Right now, we're in the process of being, getting our annual audit through the State Auditor's Office for the fiscal year 1718. Everything there's going real well. Employees are currently being enrolled in the new health insurance plan the past two days. As Callie mentioned, I've been helping with the fireworks, coordinating with property owners to set off the fireworks down on West Main Street. And I just note that because Citizens Bank, Premier Bank, and Centennial Motel have been very cooperative with us in allowing us to set off fireworks right behind the businesses, and we thank them for that. For budgets, we are also going through our enterprise funds budgets, and we've gotten approved the past month. Consolidated Public Works Budget was passed in the amount of 171,288. That board contains the expenses for the flowers and parks and cemeteries. The budget for the Waste Collection Board was just approved this evening. It's $3,365,000. This budget will include the pay raises that'll happen in December. It's got a grant in there for $75,000 for a hook lift, and then I just noted that the fuel costs have gone up, and our tonnage over the past few years has gone up over 1,000 tons per year. Brick Street renewed the premium quote for us this year for July 119, and it's going to go down. We actually reported more wages, but the expiring premium was at 98,717, and the new premium is 95,040. Our E-mod, which is the Experience Modification Rating, went down from .76 to .71. And this has a lot to do with our safety programs that we're implementing, and we're keeping Brick Street abreast of what we're doing, and they've been pretty happy with us. I forgot to tell you, in your revenues and expenses for May, you had $380,000 in revenues and 429 in expenses, but we also had three pays in that month, and I'll reiterate, we're also working on some summer projects that we're expensing more money. So that's not anything to be alarmed about. I also wanted to report that Casey Gilbert, our volunteer coordinator, has notified me today that she would be resigning at the end of this month. She got a full-time job with Generation West Virginia, and she's going to help direct 20 counties, so we were real happy for her. The job she has here was a part-time job, so we'll be seeking out a new volunteer coordinator. We're happy about that. In your, yeah, in your bills to be approved, I always like to note the ones that's a little different than normal. A zero-turn mower was purchased by Thetis for $1,784. Food equipment, tracks for the excavator, $1,700. Boots for the Stockard Drill Team, $1,700. We paid the half cost for the fireworks this year, which was $2,500, and then we had some theater renovation expenses, which were, well, it looks like it was around $20,000, $25,000. We had blacktop for the water line extension project out by Sheetz, which we're going to get reimbursed for some of that, $1,300, and $6,000 to central supply for concrete on the same project. And I think that's it. I'll have a revision up later in the.
Questions for Andy? The Stockard Campaign continues to slowly grow, and we're still waiting. We know that there is a large gift coming for the Colonial Theater. It will be announced as soon as they give us the thumbs up to announce it. And we're still waiting any day to receive notice on our Phase Three Theater Grant Application, which I think we were looking for pushing $70,000 for this next phase, but we haven't heard yet. Thanks, Andy.
Thank you. Thanks, Andy.
Well, Chief Kimmel isn't here, but he sent a couple, he had to send three people, or two, three people, because, yeah. How's it going, Brian?
Just fine. I know you all are doing pretty well. The Fire Chief's house celebrating his daughter's 13th birthday tonight.
Good for him. That's great.
During the month of May, he asked, we responded 120 calls for the month of May. In that, you can look in there, we responded to two building fires. There was one vehicle fire, 33 EMS calls, those are excluding vehicle accidents with injuries, nine actual motor vehicle accidents with injuries we responded to, three motor vehicle versus pedestrian accidents, 16 motor vehicle accidents with no injuries we got on scene. We responded to one locked in, had a child locked in a vehicle, we responded to that and got it out. And then we had free power line down calls, two calls for arcing or short electrical equipment, one call for a building or structure weakened or collapsed call. We had 16 people locked out of their vehicles we responded to for the month of May. One animal problem, which I do not know what that was at the time. Four public service calls, four unauthorized burnings, people burning fresh piles illegally. 17 calls we responded to is canceled while we was en route. One hazmat release, that is a carbon dioxide alarm investigation we responded to, luckily that was nothing found. Three smoke detector activations, Robyn's seen there, is unintentional and luckily no fire found. One alarm system activation, again, unintentional and no fire was found. And we responded to two calls for wind damage, buildings and stuff for that. So we ended with 120 calls, and at the end of May, we responded to 556 calls so far this year. And then he also, during the Strawberry Festival, we had 76 additional hours of overtime for that weekend, costing $1,750 in additional salaries. During that time, we assisted with over 20 incidents during the Saturday parade alone. Most of those was heat-related injuries, illnesses. At the end of June, we're going to be doing a lot of training down at the Camden Dorms at West Virginia Westland College. If you're in that area, you will see smoke, buildings being smoked up and stuff for training. We're going to be having an Enhanced Search Methodology class, and also a 20-hour RIT course. And RIT courses for Rapid Intervention Team, that's for firemen to be trained to, where if one of our own gets in trouble inside a building, they are trained to know what to get in and rescue that firefighter if they're in trouble. That's what that boils down to. And we would encourage any of the council to please come down, take a look what's going on. You're more than welcome to suit up, we'll take you in, show you what it's like to have to do it.
What date?
The Enhanced Search is the 27th and 28th, and the rest of the week, that 20 hours, we're doing RIT class for that.
Brian, JB was telling me that the one fellow coming in from Charlotte is one of the, whatever field, subfield that he specializes in, that he's one of the very best in all of.
In the nation, yes. Yes, very good. Andrew Storns, and I can't remember the other gentleman's name. I know Andrew Storns is captain of Charlotte Fire Department, North Carolina. Very good.
He's Italian chief now.
Oh, Italian chief now? So yeah, he's going to be a very good class for local people around here. Hart Safe has installed two ADs, one at the Courthouse, that is located on Chantry Street by the public bathrooms, and the other one was installed at Jawbone Park, I guess, on the stage itself. And he said the next will be installed at the Riverwalk Trail, and that'll be coming soon. And is there any question? That's all he asked.
Questions for Brian Horner? To all the guys to be safe, first and foremost.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is City Attorney Tom O'Neil. Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm with the council. It's been a busy couple of weeks since our last meeting. I've been focusing on preparing the new health insurance plan. There were some revisions that had to be made to the participation agreement we signed to make sure they conformed with our obligations under state law. I've also been discussing with Ambi some revisions to the employee handbook that have, the need for which has been building up for some time, and will probably at a critical mass will be going through a beginning of redrafting a process of a new version for that within the next month or two at most. In addition to that, we're going to go through our purchasing guidelines and distill those, probably put them into ordinance form, just as a matter of cleanup. Right now, we're just kind of operating on our written policies, and, you know, the way things have been done, I think it would be advisable to distill those then into an ordinance form. And also, on behalf of Jerry and everyone else who'll be working with the Board of Education on a draft agreement for the teardown of their, the facility next to the board office on Smithfield Street for purposes of opening up some additional parking in that area adjacent to Academy, adjacent to the, I guess it's the east side of Academy Elementary School, which will take care of the, some of the on-street parking pressures that we've received feedback from City Hall. And finally, I'd like to introduce my intern for the month of June, Gabriel Sager, who's a rising senior at West Virginia West Lane. She's going to be taking the law school admissions test next month, and is interested in, for some reason, is interested in becoming an attorney. I guess I wouldn't be able to talk her out of it, but tell her, try to warn her off and save herself, but.
She's been greatly inspired by some of the courses she was at in college.
I know.
I thought about being an attorney until I had those courses, so.
You took that one more time.
If you have a relevant opportunity, introduce yourself and just, if you'd like to share anything about yourself with the council.
Well, I'm Gabby, and I'm excited to.
So is McCollum.
And I'm excited to use what Mr. McCollum has showed me, I guess, in the future, and that's it.
Where are you from, Gabby?
Parkersburg, West Virginia.
She's a golfer, too. Obviously, Bobcat Golfing. Good luck on the ball courses.
Thanks.
Lawyers do a lot of golf.
So this is her first week, and she's already been a fantastic elephant. We're looking forward to having her, having her working with us.
For the whole month of June?
Yeah.
How about your lot?
She's going to take the LSAT, so she's going to get ready and take the LSAT. Anyway, that's my report. I'll be happy to fill any questions.
Questions for Tom? Gabby, what was your major?
English.
You'll do well in the sports. Absolutely. Correspondence and information, I'm going to do a quick rundown of this stuff. It's been a busy three or four weeks. There's a notice of Planning Commission, it'll be a public meeting on June 10th, so that's next Monday. I forget, Ambi, is that here or is that the community and training room?
I'll be here.
Is it here in Council Chamber? Okay. There's a notice of a rescheduled meeting for both the City Council and the Sanitary Board, because June 20th is West Virginia Day, so we bumped both of those meetings up to Tuesday, June 18. There's a notice of a rescheduled meeting of the City Council and the Waste Collection Board that had been scheduled for Thursday, July 4th. Both of those meetings will be conducted on Tuesday, July 2nd. You have the Stockard Youth and Community Centers Youth Champion Award, it was Larry Carter. The 2019 Firefighter Recognition Friendly Way Honorary was Joe Bennett. The 2019 Web Grab Police Officer Recognition Honorary was Fred Godey. There's a proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month. There is the greetings that I brought to the Strawberry Festival at the Courthouse. There's a thank you letter to the Strawberry Festival Board of Volunteers. There's a welcome letter to the West Virginia United Methodist Annual Conference Attendees. Remember, those folks all show up about next Wednesday, and they'll be here until Saturday evening or Sunday morning. There is, we have an address for the Buchanan Dog Park, which is officially 20 Randolph Street. Thank you, Jerry. There's a terrific article, if you haven't read it already, it's "Beauty Affects Cities Economic Growth." I strongly encourage the council to take a peek at that one. There is also a nice interview on West Virginia Metro News. Former Clarksburg Mayor and President of the National League of Cities, Jim Hunt, was interviewed on Metro News, and he put a couple of plugs in for Buchanan, that if you want a town in West Virginia that does it right, just go check out Buchanan. The fact that Jim's from Clarksburg, we like to feature those little plugs if I can. My Memorial Day address a week or two ago, and then a reminder to council that the Annual Conference of the West Virginia Municipal League is August 6th through 9th in Huntington. So put that on your calendars if you're able to shake loose to attend the Municipal League Conference. The Consent Agenda consists of five items. The first would be the approval of several minutes meetings, the regular meeting on May 14, and the three special meetings on May 23, May 28, and June 4, all of 2019. Consent Agenda Item Two is the approval of our building and wiring permits. Consent Agenda Item Three is the approval of the payment of our general fund bills. E4 is Buffalo Wild Wings Temporary Extension of the Alcohol Beverage Control License Floor Plan, June through August 2019. And then the reappointment for a two-year term of Dennis Cordes to the Buchanan Upshore Park and Recreation Board. I would entertain a motion that we approve our consent agenda. I have a motion by Mr. Rylands. I have a second. I have a second by Mr. Thomas. Is there any discussion on any of those consent agenda items?
Is the floor plan just onto the porch?
Yes, and apparently they have to, much like the Party Peak down the way, they have to periodically file that with us. I don't think we have a, I don't think it's anything we could not approve?
I assumed it was just on the deck there, so.
That's fine, understand. Do you know anything different from that, Ambi?
We just have to certify to the ABCA that their application does not violate any city ordinance.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the approval of the consent agenda? If not, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, like sign motion carries. And gee, we're down to strategic issues for discussion and or vote already. First up is Resolution 2019-05, Support Extension Number Four for the Binky Poundstone Riverwalk Trail. Tom or Jerry, or am I just going to win this?
What are we talking about?
Resolution 2019-05. I can just read it by caption. Do you want to comment about it before I read it?
No, I don't hate the word. It's just an extension of the...
We have two different river trail extension grant applications that Callie and Jay have been working on. Did you want to say anything about it, Callie? I asked everybody else except you.
Well, I thought perhaps that it had already been approved, but it's not. It's the, goes along with the Transportation Alternatives Program grant application to do the extension. It divided into two sections. It's one from where it currently stops from Marion Street to Mon, and the other being from Mon to Ohio.
I don't think we executed the resolution.
Oh, okay. I apologize. That's what it's referring to then?
Do you want to read that by caption for us, Mr. Sanders?
Brother Muck, you want me to?
You might as well. Yeah, because the, you know, the camera lights are on.
All right.
Right out there.
All right, so read that again. Resolution number 2019-05 of the Council of the City of Buchanan, formally offering its support for the engineering design and surveying phase of the Elizabeth J. Binky Poundstone Riverwalk, trail extension number four, Transportation Alternatives Project. Where at the City of Buchanan?
We can stop there.
Okay, good.
Don't get carried away, Randy.
Is this mic on? Is this mic on?
I would entertain a motion that we approve this grant application. So we got a motion and a second. I think the motion was by Thomas and the second was by Rylands. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing is a need for none. I'll call for that question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, like sign a motion. Kerry's.
Roll call now.
Yeah, we do need to do a roll call vote. I thought the recorder did that.
All right. Number one, David W. McCollough, mayor.
I affirm that. I vote for that.
And Bacon's sitting in recorder. I'm Bacon, so I affirm that, huh?
That's your new name.
That's a new name. Bacon.
Bacon Randy.
Yes. Mary Albaugh.
Yes.
Pamela Buckloo is...
She's absent.
Absent. C.J. Rylands.
Yes.
Robert Skinner III.
Yes.
J. David Thomas.
Yes.
And we'll sign this before you go, folks, so that we can get that out. The next matter is Resolution 2019-06, which is a general fund budget revision.
We're going to read that?
No, we're going to let, we're going to let Amby tell us first all about it, and then you can read it by caption. But there's not much of a caption to that one.
Okay, so in your package, you're going, this is the final budget revision for general fund, I hope. I hope that there's none come up between now and the end of the month because it'll really press us to get those in. So basically, same as last year, we're going to go through, I've gone through every line item, every revenue item, and decided, decided what probably need to be tweaked a little bit. So in revenues, the total change in budget is $6,819. Of that $1,000 is a grant that we just received from a family's leading chain. The, I have details in, in the packet of each line item in case you want to look at that. I always put notes. But I'll just highlight a few things. We got notification that to be a rural city, we now have to pay a $2,000 fee to participate in that. So I had to budget that in there. We had to increase the office budget $3,000, and that had to do with credit card fees. More people are paying with credit cards. Employees travel to short distances, but need to do that. And of course, we had to pay for that election bill that should have gone out last year, but it came out this year. So that took me over an audit. Audit, we're being audited right now, and he finished the audit late last year, so that lapped me over into this year. So now I'm going to have, I had to pay the audit last year and this year, and this year and this year because I think he's going to finish it early. I moved some things around. The street department needed some auto supplies, $6,400. But the season finished for snow removal, so we deducted that back out. Stockard needed movie license to show movies publicly. And I think that's really it. Nothing, nothing major. Six thousand, at the time, I add and subtract all of the items, it's 6,800 addition in the budget. But I'd be more than glad to go over detail by detail if you want me to.
Counsel, I would entertain a motion that we approve Resolution 2019-06, general fund budget revision.
So move.
A motion by Skinner or second by Albaugh, is there discussion on the motion? No, call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, like sign, or recorder will call the roll.
Mary Albaugh.
Yes.
Robbie Skinner.
Yes.
Clifford J. Rylands.
Yes.
Pamela Buckloo.
Absent.
David Thomas.
Yes.
David McCollough.
Yes.
Randall Sanders, yes.
All right, pass that one on. We're done with that. Next is the approval, and this is an annual thing that we've been doing for the last several years now, of the Prevention Resource Officer. This is Mark Stewart, that eight, nine months a year that he spends up at Buchanan Academy Elementary. It's the annual renewal agreement between the City of Buchanan, the Buchanan Police Department, and the Upsher County Board of Education. It's in your packet. I've given it a once-over. Tom, did you also take a peek at this?
I did. It's unchanged from last year.
I thought it was exactly the same. Counsel, it's my recommendation that we approve this, and I would entertain a motion that we do so.
So move.
A motion by Thomas may have a second.
Second.
I have a second by Rylands. Is there discussion on that motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, authorizing me to sign this on behalf of the city, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign a motion. Kerry's. We took up at our last special meeting, the action on city health insurance. There were several matters in the statement that I gave counsel at that time. The counsel said, let's just wait, take it up on June 6th. These are important matters that I'd like to revisit with you, and we might have Tom O'Neill chime in. In order to effect any of these changes relative to future hires of the City of Buchanan, we need to put this in an ordinance form. And that's a two reading ordinance with 30-day enactment. And you just heard Jerry tell us that he's about two weeks out from being two guys short in streets and parks. So the sooner that we can affect this, the better. Let me remind you, one and two, we've already acted on, that items three through six in this statement from May 23 provides as follows. I propose the following measures to be adopted by our city council. Three, our city will immediately begin the process to establish by ordinance spousal carve-outs for future city employees. To be clear, all current full-time city employees and their current spouses and family members will continue to be covered as they have always been covered, or in other words, will be grandfathered relative to their health insurance benefits. After effectuation of the anticipated ordinance about October 1, newly hired full-time employees who are married or come to be married would be required to divulge to our city whether their spouses have health insurance available to them through the spouse's unemployment. If a spouse of an employee has such insurance available to them as part of the spouse's unemployment, that spouse would be required to be covered under their own insurance and would not be eligible for coverage by the city. Four, our city will immediately begin the process to establish by ordinance tiering of health insurance benefits for newly hired full-time employees beginning on or about October 1, 2019. After effectuation of the anticipated ordinance about October 1, 2019, newly hired full-time employees who are married and/or have other eligible family members who may be covered by city health insurance will pay 20% of the premium cost for spousal or familial coverage. Five, from now until the new, until the new health insurance ordinance is effectuated, there shall be a moratorium on hiring any new full-time employees except for the current SYCC position, for which interviews will occur, and have already occurred, on Friday, May 24, 2019. And six, our council will establish the insurance committee as a permanent standing committee and will be charged with periodic review of all matters concerning insurance, but particularly employee health insurance coverage, and will make recommendations to the full council from time to time. We project that there will be substantial additional savings relative to our health insurance as a consequence of the implementation of these measures. It's my recommendation that we adopt these, and I would entertain a motion that we adopt them. I have a motion by Mrs. Albaugh. May I have a second to her motion?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Rylands. Is there discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Mr. Skinner.
So in listening and reconsidering items three through six that we previously took as one through six a few, a few meetings ago, and Tom maybe would chime in on this as well, but for item number three and item number four, I'm glad those are separate because those are two separate matters. My concern with item number three is, can we legally tell an employee that he or she cannot participate in the spousal carve-out regardless of when they were hired? To me, that's different than the tiered program. Because if you have an employee, just for example's sake, if Jerry, if Jerry wanted to participate in the spousal carve-out but, but couldn't because he is grandfathered, but Tom is a brand-new city employee and is hired post the, the date and can participate in the spousal carve-out, can we do that? Should the spousal carve-out be anyone who can or wants to participate, new or current employee, but the tiering be after a certain date?
Well, I want to make sure I understand your question correctly before answering. You're asking whether or not an employee, a grandfathered employee could decline coverage for their spouse?
I mean, could, if, if a grandfathered employee so chose to want to participate in the spousal carve-out, could they be told no because they're, they're a...
What do you, I guess I might need to know what you mean by participate in the carve-out? So would the spouse be covered or not covered?
If, if they, if they were not covered, could, could they, could we put all employees into that, into that part of it? Because I, I see those as two totally separate things.
Okay. Well, any employee can opt out at any time. I mean, if you want to make it a voluntary thing for grandfathered employees, that, that option exists currently. They, any employee has the ability to decline coverage for their spouse if they so choose. As I understand, number three, it would be only to mandate, with respect to new employees, mandate that the spouse uses their own health insurance coverage if it is available to them through their employment. And that's the only time it would come into play, is when, when that spouse has coverage from another source.
But if a current employee shows, they could...
They could do that now.
They could do that, okay.
They can, they can decline, I mean, I, I mean, somebody could, I mean, you could owe it, and we're going through that right now with the, with the, anybody can decline, I mean, I could decline coverage for, for anybody, you know, for my wife or children or...
I'd remind, I'd remind the council, too, that we have several sets of spouses that work for us, and we don't, they're covered under one policy.
Right.
We don't get hit twice with premiums because there's two spousal employees both working.
I guess, I guess I'll answer your question by saying that current employees already have that option of declining spousal coverage.
What, what about the children? What about the dependents?
Well, with what, with what respect? I mean, it's the same, it is the same with the spouse that they can decline the coverage.
It doesn't mess with the parents because you have a spousal carve-out, and you have two or three children. Do they stay with the current employee or do they go with the spouse?
They would go, well, they could go either way. They would have the, they would have the option to elect. We could not tell, under the Affordable Care Act, we could not tell an employee that they could not include their children on their policy if those children could be covered by their spouse. We don't, we do not have the legal ability to do that. So we have to cover the employee's children, even if the spouse, even if those employee's children can be covered under the spouse's policy. That's up to them, which, whether they go under the city's policy or they go under the city employee's spouse's policy. That's, that's their option that we have to...
But as long as, as long as you have one dependent, a child, and they stay with the current employee, they're going to be under the family health.
Well, no, well, there's a difference in the, there's a difference between family and employee plus children. Those are two different kinds of policies. You can have a family policy, which is employee plus spouse plus children. You can have a different kind of policy, which is just employee plus children.
And it'll be a different cost.
Yes, there's a different premium. There's a different premium affiliated with each of those different combinations.
Other questions or discussion of this time?
Oh, is, is the, is the moratorium on hiring, what is, I mean, if we're losing two members of our street department during the summertime?
We'll do, Amby and I have a discussion. We'll hire employees. We'll go ahead and hire them full-time, but everyone's hired at six-month probation, and it will be, it will be explained that their benefits will start as soon as this ordinance is passed.
We, in the next five years, we will probably experience the loss of 20 to 25% of our residents due to retirement. So the savings, while there will be some realized in year one, the savings by the new design of carve-outs and tiering will substantially, in the next five to 10-year period, reduce our insurance premiums dramatically. I think we're, Amby and I have looked at the numbers, and we're projecting $150,000 a year in savings in a relatively short period of time. And that's it. That's $150,000 bucks that we can be building new sidewalks and paving more streets and all those other things that we want to do as an entity. Any further discussion or questions? And this will be up to Tom to come back with a draft. We, we figured if we asked him to do it tonight, we can have a draft maybe in a couple of weeks. We can take actions on it in July and then hold off until September, October to actually end it.
It's a, this is going to be one of the more complicated ordinances that...
Yeah.
If it's, if it's not quite ready two weeks from tonight, it will absolutely be ready the first, for July 2nd.
And I think some of us may still have some questions, but we should be talking to you, Tom and Amby.
Well, here's the thing, it's two reading ordinance, so the ordinance can be read a first time and amended...
Right.
Prior to its second reading.
We'll have a draft, but we're not going to vote on it. It's not a vote tonight.
No, absolutely. Well, I guess the vote tonight would be to authorize me to proceed.
Yeah, draft, yeah. Because I still have some questions, but...
Mayor, does it have anything that's going to hold up Jerry going ahead and trying to find the replacements for...
Well, Jerry and Amby are working, they've got, they've got interim coverage with seasonal workers and...
Okay.
You could actually, you could actually hire someone like we're doing now.
Right.
You can hire people to work eight hours a day, as long as they don't go over 1,040 hours. They're part-time people, considered part-time. Then he would advertise to hire full-time people when the time comes. It may very well be the people that he hired if they work into that position and are qualified.
The only thing I see is, is it will reduce the pool of folks who'll have to choose from because no one is going to want to leave a benefited position, as Callie and I were just talking, for laps of benefits for a month or two. So it could diminish the quality, but...
And at that point, you advertise if you don't have qualified people.
Yeah, right. And, you know, I, one of the things that we, with these jobs, too, that we haven't done, haven't been doing with the council is all for transfer opportunities.
Well, for what, Jerry?
Transfer.
Transfer within the city from other positions to other departments.
The other, the other element of this is Charlie and Mel, although they've been an employee for years, they're both going to come back on a part-time basis. So some of the work that we were, that's what they both told me in the alley. You're looking at me funny. That's, oh, yeah, I'm coming back to it.
There's the retirement.
Is that not what you're hearing?
Well, there's the retirement rules that they cannot break being this far into the season. They're, they're restricted to works in a calendar year. They're restricted to work over 1,040 hours in a year for work, and $20,000 in a calendar year. We're into June. They have approached very few hours.
They've met that.
And if they, they retire, then become re-employed with us, and they have worked that amount of hours, it may jeopardize some of their retirement. So things that I need to talk to them about, they may be able to come back some, but not a lot.
Yeah. Couple of days late from what I was...
Yes.
Right? The plan must have changed because everybody was on board with this when we talked about it before. Anyway, we'll figure it out. Okay. So we got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? If not, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, like sign, you may proceed, Tom.
Thank you.
Comments and announcements? We'll start out with Council Lady Albaugh. Ms. Albaugh?
Thank you for doing that for D-Day. And I gave a magazine on American Legion to the press because it gives you a little more information about D-Day. And I want to say thanks to the parking lot guru, Jerry, for the board approving the DAV and the VA bank van that was out there today and locked across from us in Offshere Street. Anyhow, 33 veterans who are not active D-Day are retired or were just in the service, but they have claims, medical claims and medical issues. 33 people showed up today. That's a lot of people. This is the most they've ever had. And we wanted to say thank you for that and for letting us have it there. And if we get Wi-Fi over at the Jawon, they're hoping that we can use that next year.
We have Wi-Fi down there now.
We do? Okay. I thought we did. Okay, good.
I've got the secret code now. Ambi sent it to me.
Oh, okay. But anyhow, I want to say thank you from the, all the veterans organizations that were there today.
Anything else, Mayor?
That's it.
Pam's not here. Mr. Rylands?
We had a community planning session with the school board and members of the Board of Education today, trying to get community input for their future plans and what their vision of education in Upsher County is in the next 10 years. I thought that was a good step and I think it was a lot of good conversations had and they got some good data, so another positive step forward.
Very good. Mr. Skinner?
Well, once again, I want to welcome Randy. I'm happy to sit next to him. You know, I've said for the last three years that I'm the only BU graduate on this council. I can't say that anymore, so. You're just jealous. You just praise the school system. But anyways, welcome to Randy. And I also attended the program today for the Board of Education. I thought it was very positive. We had a lot of people from a lot of different parts of the community. Business owners, community volunteers, people that live in Rock Cave and Hodgesville and all over the place and retired, young, old. We had, we have a very nice mix, variety today and a lot of, a lot of information was shared. So I think we're taking the right steps toward improving our community's education, so.
Rich Clements was part of our team today. He did a good job representing it.
Mr. Thomas?
David, I want to again welcome Randy here as our recorder. And both the candidates were extremely impressive. I also thank you for what you read about D-Day. Some of us up here had fathers that were in World War II. And my father was a, one of the first at Omaha Beach on June 6th. He received one of his Purple Hearts unfortunately that day. And he also had received a, I believe one of the silver, he had several Silver Stars and Bronze Star during World War II. And I believe, Barry, you may remember that, that one of those were during the D-Day.
He did.
Unfortunately, my father didn't live a very long time, so I didn't really get to know him, which is probably one of the most sad things in my life because you don't really appreciate your parents until you're a little bit older. And he died at a fairly young age. So thanks a lot, David. Thanks for all the veterans, both past and current.
Thanks, Dave. For the first time, but not the last, Mr. Sanders, what do you have for us?
Well, I just want to extend my appreciation to the council for putting their faith in me and appointing me to this new position. I pledge to the community as it did the council to bring a professional approach, to take this job very, very seriously. Fortunately, I have a schedule that's adaptable and I can be at all of the functions necessary in most cases. So I'm looking forward to it. I depend on Ambi and the able-bodied persons and able-minded persons of this administration to not let me screw anything up, keep me on the path on the right way. And I look forward to many conversations with fellow council persons moving forward. Again, just to help get actively made. I'm proud of this city. I'm proud of Buchanan. I grew up here. I felt drawn to the city my entire life and I'm thrilled to be a major part of it now in the city council. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. We're glad to have you. And next week, we're gonna do a tour.
Great, looking forward to it.
Wonderful places like the sewer plant, waste collection garage. Yeah, it's gonna be just terrific.
Can I look at my camera?
We'll probably be looking to hire a new city recorder for next week's tour.
David, put him on the census committee.
He's gotta wait till he misses a meeting. I would echo what Rylands and Skinner said about the Board of Education once, it's a terrific thing. Mary was there too. If you missed the first Festival Friday last Friday, it was a terrific evening in the park. Please, bring your kids and, you know, notwithstanding the whining and complaining about the new four-way stop down at Madison and Florida Street, we've got a lot of allies out there. So that should've been done 10 years ago. I don't know why those idiots didn't do that sooner, yeah.
You know how many times I've always been hit there?
Yeah. It's, it's.
I bet it was bad.
We're trying to be pedestrian-friendly and it's gonna be a good thing. And change is difficult, but this isn't a big change. This is a change for the better. So please come out and support the Festival Friday vendors. It's a terrific thing. I have a very short property-related executive session matter to take up with the council. So I would entertain a motion that we adjourn. No decisions are we made into executive session. Thomas, a motion, second by Albaugh. Discussion on the motion. Call for the question. All those in favor of adjourning into executive session, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, like sign. We'll take a two, three-minute recess and then a short executive session.